Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners meeting for March 8th, 2022. I want to welcome everybody here this morning. To begin our meeting, I'll ask Brad Hall with the Rotor Heaver Boys Ranch to come up and he will do our invocation and Commissioner Turner will lead us in the pledge. Please stand if you're able.
Thank you. Let's pray. God, we come before you this morning on this beautiful day, just thanking you, Father, for the ability we have to get up and just to serve in this community this morning. And Lord, we are mindful that we are blessed. God, we're mindful that there's a lot of unrest going on around the world today. We pray for the people of Ukraine. We pray, God, for that crisis there and that war there. That, Lord, you would just protect those people, intervene, Lord, we pray, that there would be a resolution soon to this conflict. And God, we thank you for the ones who are doing humanitarian work there and we pray for them. Lord, we also pray for our community. I know that we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of local businesses and people that are struggling with these increased fuel prices. God, we pray for their provision and wisdom and how to carry on business and to keep everything running. And I know that affects our county government as well. So, Lord, I pray for wisdom in this room this morning and all the business that's going to be conducted. And we thank you for this all in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, for the invocation and Commissioner Turner for leading us in the pledge. Commissioners, our next item of a business, and I'll explain to the audience, we don't have these very often, but we have to move into, we have to recess this Board of County Commissioners meeting and move into executive sessions for a workman compensation discussion with staff. So, I'll recess the meeting and hopefully be back in probably 15 minutes or so. Thank you. That's okay with the commissioners? Okay. This time, I'd like to ask Ms. Leota Wilkinson to come up. She's a district aide to State Representative Bobby Payne, District 19, just to give us an update on the Port Authority bill that's moving through the House and the Senate.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Pleased to provide you with an update on House Bill 907 filed by Representative Payne and companion bill, Senate Bill 1038 filed by Senator Keith Perry entitled Florida Seaport Transportation and Economic Development Council. The goal of this bill is to recognize Putnam County Port Authority and its facility at the Palaca Barge Port as a public port in the state of Florida in order to encourage economic growth for the region. This bill specifically will allow Putnam County to request a grant to conduct a port feasibility study and add the county to be included in the council. The bill allows Putnam County until July 2024 to apply for the feasibility study on the possibility of establishing the port in the county. If the study comes back unfavorably, Putnam County would be removed from the council. Representatives from Florida's 15 public seaports plus the Florida Department of Transportation and Economic Development Council currently make up the council. An amendment approved Thursday clarifies that the council would have to approve Putnam County's feasibility study. The House bill passed unanimously and the Senate bill passed with only one nay vote. The bill is currently enrolled and has been sent to the governor's desk. As you know, he can either sign it or veto it. If the governor does not do either, it becomes effective without his signature on July 1st of this year. So, what can you do to help? Send emails or write a letter to the governor's office, either individually or as a group, asking for his approval of House Bill 907. And just on behalf of Rep. Payne, thank you for this vision. This enables Putnam County to obtain funding to build what we could have, a regional transportation hub and port in the heart of our designated economically distressed county. This can be a game changer for our county. So, thank you for your time. And if you have any questions regarding the bill, you can either reach out to me or I can take them at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Leota, for that update. It's really positive, positive news.
Yes.
We'll start with questions. Commissioner Turner, if you don't mind taking questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask that you go back to Representative Payne and also to Representative Perry, who has been on our side on this from day one, and tell them how much we appreciate them getting this through for us because this is a really big deal for Putnam County.
It is.
Or it can be.
It can be.
And so, anyhow, give them our thanks, please.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
Okay. Any other commissioners? Thanks. Commissioner Suggs, would you like to make a comment on that?
Yes, sir. I have two, if that's okay.
Yes.
One is absolutely piggybacking on Commissioner Turner's comments that this, this push through legislation wouldn't be possible without the help of Representative Payne and Senator Perry and the staff of both of those agencies. So, thank you very much, Ms. Leota, for that update this morning. Also, while we're on the subject of port, back on October 26th, the Board of County Commissioners gave Administrator the directive to go out and look at the purchase of a piece of property from 234 Comfort Road pending on
Thank you, Leo.
the outcome of a environmental study. I'm proud to say this morning that we got an email late Friday that there was little to no concern and that we were, it was recommended that we go ahead and move forward if that's the board's direction this morning. So, I'm asking the board again this morning, just to clarify your actions, allow me to go ahead and reach out to Georgia Pacific to get the purchase sale agreement moving forward so we can reach our, we've already did due diligence. I just need our, to move forward on the purchase now.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Turner?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Would a motion be in order at this point?
I would think it would.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go ahead and pursue the purchase of the GP property that we're looking for on Comfort Road.
Okay. Got a proper motion. Okay, got a proper second. All right. For discussion, we'll start with Commissioner Turner.
Okay. That's pretty much what I was going to ask, Mr. Chairman. The, I think this is going to be a very good purchase for Putnam County, especially with what's going on in the world today. I think we got in at the correct time, for sure. I was happy that, who did you pick that second up from, myself or Commissioner Rawls? Did Commissioner Rawls second that along with me at the same time? Did you second that, Commissioner Rawls?
When we bought the property, to buy the property?
Yeah. Did you second that motion? Yeah. So, okay. So, I think it's a really good deal that we're doing this and I'm certainly in favor of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls?
Under due diligence, do we do a phase one and a phase two or just a phase one? We done a phase one and a phase two. Okay, cool.
Commissioner Adams, I saw your light on, but you're good? Okay. Okay. So, we've got a proper motion and a proper second to move forward as discussed on the purchase of the property at the price that we determined, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. All in favor indicate saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign?
Aye.
Okay. Moves forward to one with Commissioner Adams Act dissenting.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
Could we discuss payment on, just for a second, because we haven't identified funds to pay for it yet with. So, we spent some of our money the other day. Do we have a timeframe on when that other $600,000 would be, would be to us and to the port?
I believe the agreement is coming from the board at the next commission meeting, which will be the 22nd of March.
So, we could, if we, if the commission decided to pay for that out of port funds at this time, then the additional, the additional, until the additional monies came, we, there wouldn't be an issue with us loaning the port the money to finish that purchase until such time as that other money came in? Or could we buy it as a joint venture? Or how would, how would we, what would be the best way to do that?
Commissioner, that would essentially, even with that, we would be leaving the port without any source of reserves. So, it would be my recommendation to not drain the port completely of those funding dollars and to do some sort of agreement where the general fund does pay for some portion of this particular property.
Well, don't we have right now approximately 1.1 and we took 500 of it the other day out, basically a little under, well, 413. So, we should have about 700 in, in the left in the port. And if we get 600 from the, from the sale of that other property, that other port property, that shouldn't drain the, drain it down. We should still have a 300,000 or so reserve money left in the port. Is that not correct? Or the, I know it's hard to talk to an accountant about generalities, but in general.
Commissioner, at this time, I think it may be prudent to let me run all the actual numbers for you and bring you back a recommendation on what's going to be most financially confident for the board to take action on. And then you, seeing the numbers, the board can always advise staff to do it, meld the plan, how you feel fit.
I'm good with that.
Mr. Chairman, just to add on to that, in my conversations as recent as yesterday with, with the seller, I believe we have a 45-day window. So, we'll have some time to come back with the numbers that you were searching for so we can make a decision then.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls?
I guess it's a difficult conversation to have because we have two different entities right now. We're convened as a port authority, not the BSCC, but, you know, the port authority is supposed to defray its own expenses. I just wonder if we shouldn't have this conversation under BSCC and hold the land as BSCC at the right time, just transfer it to the port. Then we don't have any of these anxieties that we have to worry about, especially with liability insurance on property that's vacant.
Mr. Chairman, I'm really struggling today. I apologize, but I left my hearing aids home this morning. Could you give me the gist of that again, Commissioner? I didn't catch it all.
Basically, if, if we, if we buy the property as a, as a Putnam County BSCC, I know that we're convened as a port authority right now, but if we did it as BSCC, leave it as BSCC and at the right time, we transfer it to the port authority, then from a liability perspective, it falls under BSCC. If we have to make any, you know, we're going to have to maintain it to some degree. And the port doesn't have any reoccurring revenue to do that. We put the insurance liability would be on the BSCC. I think it'd be a lot easier to my point.
This commissioner has no problem with what you just said at all. Ms. Young, I'm sure is going to take that into consideration when she comes back with her recommendation. So, yes, sir, I think that's sound advice.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. You'll consider all those options, I'm sure, and some more, probably. So, okay. All right. Any further general discussion at all for the port authority? Okay. I'll adjourn the port authority and I'll reconvene the regular Board of County Commissioners regular meeting and we'll move down to presentations. And I've asked Commissioner Adams Act to read this proclamation, but it's National Red Cross Month, so I'd like to ask Mr. Skip Kramer to come forward along with, I'm drawing a blank.
Quincy Masters.
Quincy Masters. Come forward and, and I'll present the proclamation.
Would you like me to start reading?
Morning, Quincy. Hey, we got you to smile. Putnam County Proclamation Number 2022-016, National Red Cross Month. Whereas the American Red Cross is a humanitarian organization founded in 1881 and originally chartered by Congress as a federal instrumentality in 1900 but receives no federal funding. And whereas the American Red Cross prevents and alleviates human suffering in the face of emergencies by mobilizing the power of volunteers and the generosity of donors. And whereas the American Red Cross responds to more than 60,000 disasters annually and delivers vital services to members of the armed forces, their families, and veterans at home and overseas, and provides lifesaving health and safety training to more than 4 million people in 2022. And whereas March is recognized as Red Cross Month across the nation, and 2021 marks 141st anniversary of the American Red Cross and 108th anniversary of Florida's first chartered Red Cross chapter established here in Northeast Florida in March 1914. And whereas the American Red Cross has repeatedly answered the call to assist Northeast Florida, beginning with the yellow fever epidemic in 1888, including support to American troops during the Spanish-American War. And whereas the Northeast Florida Chapter of the American Red Cross provides its humanitarian services across 13 counties in Northeast Florida and is the headquarters for the 35-county Red Cross North Florida Region stretching from the first coast across the entire breadth of the Florida Panhandle. And whereas the North Florida Region and Northeast Florida Chapter of the American Red Cross in 2021 helped more than 1,200 families affected by home fires or other disasters, including more than 100 residents in Putnam County. And whereas the North Florida Region hosted 60 blood drives throughout the region, including collections targeted at sickle cell disease and important minority blood type collections, and provided nearly 22,000 vital services to military members, veterans, and families, and deployed more than 200 of its 1,200 volunteers in response to hurricanes and other disasters. And whereas the American Red Cross and its Northeast Florida Chapter have delivered these vital services without interruption and with scrupulous attention to client and volunteer safety throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas American Red Cross disaster assistance is free and 90 cents of every dollar donated goes directly to the mission service delivery. And now therefore be resolved by the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners that we recognize March is National Red Cross Month, the 141st anniversary of the American Red Cross, and 108th anniversary of the Northeast Florida Chapter of the American Red Cross, and commend the volunteers and paid staff of the North Florida Region for their continuing humanitarian service to Putnam County and the state of Florida. Done order adopted this day of March, 8th day of March 2022. So moved.
Okay. We've got a proper motion and a proper second to approve this proclamation. All in favor indicate saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Congratulations and thank you for all your work.
Chairman Pickens, Commissioners, thank you very, very much for honoring this anniversary date for our Northeast Florida Chapter, Florida's first chapter, and for the American Red Cross. It's prophetic because part of the reason that, that I'm here, I'm a past board member of the Northeast Florida Chapter whose territory includes Putnam County, but I'm a leadership volunteer, a community volunteer leader, and that is what Quincy Masters is. I've been with the chapter for 30 years. Quincy's been there the entire time, has been part of the Red Cross family as a board chair, as a board member, and now is a community volunteer leader, specifically helping us out, focused here on the needs of the community in Putnam County. There are some people that are not here today that I had hoped to introduce you. First, we have a new CEO. Her name is Christian Smith, and she is now involved, as is our entire disaster staff, with the fires in Bay County, where they're sheltering. We were helping veterans that had been evacuated from a veteran's home. Fortunately, they're, they're now back in that center. Uh, we were helping, uh, veterans that had been evacuated from a veterans' home. Fortunately, they're, they're now back in that center, but doing a number of things. Another person I wanted to introduce to you is in the service of the Armed Forces area, and, uh, as with our invocation today, it reminded me that Susan Ecker, uh, deployed two weeks ago to do a six-month tour for service of the Armed Forces overseas, originally to the Gulf, and now she is in Poland with U.S. Forces. So, uh, we are out there, we're doing our thing. Fortunately, our disaster people have already had an opportunity to meet with your emergency managers, so it's, it's not that we, we haven't made contact here in Putnam County. So, again, thank you so much for the, uh, for the honor, and, uh, we pledge to be here for you and for the residents of Putnam County. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Well, it has been an honor to be a, a volunteer with the Red Cross. Actually, not 30 years. I became a spontaneous volunteer. I just started helping in 1998 during the fires that we were having. And I did never serve on the chairman, I was never chairman of the board, but I did serve on the board. An honor to do so, and thanks all so much for your recognition.
Wonderful.
Congratulations. Mr. Kramer, congratulations. Thank you for all the work.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll move down to item B, uh, in presentations, and since this, uh, March is kickoff to the fair, Putnam County Fair, I've asked, uh, J.R. Newbold, the chairman of the fair authority, uh, to come forward. If you bring some of your staff and board members, uh, to just give us an update on, on the upcoming fair, and thank you, J.R.
You're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity to come give you an update, and we'll update you on a few things in addition to the fair, just, uh, kind of the, the state of affairs in general. Um, I have a, a team here with me today. Um, Amy Pecore is our outgoing fair board manager. She's been with us for seven years now. She has led us capably and, and, uh, dragged us into the modern era, so we are thankful for her guidance through her time here. We have Samantha Fairline, who is our incoming, uh, fairgrounds manager. She's been with us since mid-December. She and Amy have been working together and will be together through this fair. She has a, a background in, in entertainment industry, and, and, uh, we are excited to have her lead us forward. Also, Malcolm Fabry is our vice chairman of the board currently. Our dates are the 18th through the 26th. Uh, we moved to a nine-day format a number of years back. That's been very successful for us. Amy and, and Samantha have done a little reconnaissance. They have good communication with other fairs around the region, and they are having good numbers to date, and we expect to have robust, uh, attendance as well. Just as a point of reference, last year we had right around 30,000 folks attend the fair. During that, you know, 10, 14-day period, we have, uh, 60 campers on site for, for that time and do about a half a dozen hotel rooms. This year, a little different, and we're not, uh, we don't have strict COVID protocols, uh, in place, so we will have an abundance of hand sanitizer and, and, uh, just signage around, encouraging people to, to wear masks if they feel appropriate and, and, you know, keep clean. Given that those protocols are relaxed, we will have our standard complement of activities. We'll be doing a civic club luncheon, senior day, pre-K day, and of course, the buyer's dinner. Uh, this year, we have, uh, a recently revamped sponsorship program. Jay Browning has, uh, kind of reorganized and reinvigorated that program. Uh, we've got record, um, participation with businesses in the community. We've secured, uh, over $80,000 in cash and in-kind contributions, and, uh, two of those are new entities for us, and they have, uh, multi-year engagements with us, so that's a, a growing part of our fair program. Uh, one of the most visible sponsor contributions this year is a donation from Florida Trucking and Paving. And as you're around out on the grounds, you'll see we have aprons going from our existing asphalt, uh, walkways into every exhibit building on the, on the grounds. So, that's been a, a fantastic, uh, sponsorship. We are in the midst of a rebranding campaign. Um, we're going to have new logos, new color scheme. Uh, we have a new website that is up and running that's more friendly and gives you a lot more information. As a part of that, uh, we are installing a, I guess it's, uh, an online ticketing technology. It's a platform that will allow anybody to access either our website or through a mobile device. You can purchase your tickets in advance. You can get entry ticket, ride ticket. Uh, you can come up there. We'll have a, a fast lane if you purchased in advance, and we're trying to improve that customer experience by, I guess if any of you came out last year on a Wednesday, we had the, the line to nowhere, and it was, uh, I, I, to the credit of our public, you know, they were ready to come back after COVID. Uh, it was amazing how friendly and they, they just didn't give us a lot of grief about that. It was, it was fantastic. So, we've got great, great community support. We are updating our entry sign. We were hoping to have that done before the fair, but, um, logistically, everything seems to be behind. We will be, we purchased, uh, laminate skins to replace that fading board out, uh, on the road. It's, it'll have the new logo, the new, uh, color scheme, have a LED interior, so it'll be nice and bright, uh, a very friendly entrance. We still haven't determined how to overcome the challenges we have with the digital board, but we'll, we'll, we'll get to that. Oh goodness, um, a lot going on. We have, uh, an improved Wi-Fi infrastructure. We had a committee get with the county's IT, uh, staff who have been fantastic to work with. They've been responsive and, and, and technically savvy. So, now within the grounds, you can access Wi-Fi. We will have that prioritized for the fair for our infrastructure, but on off-season, um, anywhere within the grounds, you'll have a pretty good Wi-Fi signal. We are in the midst of electrical upgrades as well. Uh, this has been a, kind of a, a project a long time in coming. Right now, we have a team of electricians out there mapping the electrical infrastructure. Um, they'll be upgrading all of our updated panel boxes and outlets. Some of that we're prioritizing to do now. Some of it'll be done throughout the year. Uh, right after the fair, we'll be, uh, replacing those stadium lights out in the public parking lot with LED fixtures, so that'll be a, a great addition as well. As y'all are aware, there's an appropriation to the county, um, that was secured in large part by Representative Payne, and, um, we are working with Ms. Young and Mr. Sullivan on a multi-building project. We have, uh, conceptual design. We've requested from the community, five local, well, not local, one local and four outside contractors to give us, uh, budgetary estimates for this, this program. We've gotten one of those back so far. Anyway, that's for a, a roughly 19,000-square-foot building, which is primarily meeting space. There'll be some storage and, and other, but, uh, that could potentially be a, a great improvement. Uh, we've got off, off-season rental activity that's been growing and, and more robust than ever before. Uh, last year, we had over $27,000 in income on 58 off-season rental events. So, that's a, a great, a great improvement. We're, uh, we have a few challenges there. I guess many of you are aware. We get a few noise complaints, and we've made internal changes to try to overcome that by changing our monetary penalties for folks who are noisy, so hopefully we'll have improvement there. We had a new building that was, uh, completed in 2019. Um, we borrowed $200,000 to complete that project. Uh, we're on time with our payments. That building's used very regularly. If anybody went to the Wild Game Feast, it was held in, held in that space. Got, uh, plans over the next couple of years to put in large ventilation fans in that, that building as well. But, uh, again, we're on time with payments and owe 129,000 on it. We had a community partner that helped with financing and, and, uh, it's been a good thing. So, that is, uh, most of what I have. Um, we have, I'll leave some of these out front that are, you'll see these around at businesses in the community. You can snap, buy your tickets in advance. Hopefully, we'll get some traction there. We've got, uh, if any of you guys have art to, to put in, in, in any of our competitions, you can come Thursday or Friday and enter your art. That's really all I have. Do any of you guys have anything that's pressing or?
Well, thank you, J.R. And I've done, some of the commissioners will have some questions, but thank you for the update. A lot going on, a lot of changes. Looks like a lot of positives, and hope it's going to be a great year, because, um, I, I did attend the, uh, Wild Game Feast and that, that new building, that venue is great for that, and I believe they had the Turkey Federation, uh, dinner the last Friday there also, so that's a great venue, so.
Absolutely.
So, anyway, so thank you for all that y'all are doing there, and we'll start with some questions, uh, from Commissioner Adams Act.
Yes, I don't have any questions. Just really excited about the fair. I did try out the click to buy tickets. It was pretty easy, so I liked that. Um, just real excited that we're moving it forward. I think that's going to help with you get more attendance and, and things like that, and, uh, just really excited about the fair and what we're doing at the fairgrounds, and I think you guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rawls?
Um, so I guess the, my question is, what can we do for you? Now, you're, you're part of our economic development. You provide a lot of value to the, the, uh, community. What, what can we as a commission do to help move you along?
Wow, that's a big question. Um, well, there, it is a big question. You know, that appropriation is for 1.2 million dollars.
You're going to need between eight and a half and, and 900 just to get the building up.
Yeah, it, it's going to be, all of the contractors we've spoken with, so you, you're really kidding me on this, right?
You're not, you're not going to do it for 1.2 right now?
No.
Not in today's environment?
We are not, and, and I, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate me, for me to share what that figure is for that one bid that we've got, but it's substantially, um, more than that, than that, uh, that appropriation. So, we will get those, um, bids back. We'll meet with county staff and come to you with, uh, hopefully, a way to go forward.
So, what you did on the last time you built an enclosed, enclosed building out there, um, you had a, a design-build aspect to it. Um, the, you can buy the building and save on that, buy it directly. That's, that's a huge savings. You do have local subs that could do your con, your electrical and your concrete. So, there, there's other ways to skin the cat versus going out there, um, design and then bidding it and then building it. So, I'd be happy to work with you guys if you want on an advisory side. Um, last time I did it, you guys saved a substantial amount of money.
Absolutely. It was a, it was a great partnership last time, and, and I hope as we bring these, uh, estimates in, we can look in that direction. So, we appreciate, um, you really helped create value for us in that last, that last, uh, building project, and, and hopefully we can achieve the same thing, you know, upcoming.
Well, um, you know, we, we haven't met in a while. Your committee and our, our commissions.
Yes.
Um, I would personally like to see more interaction like that. Uh, that way we could.
We'd be happy to get on a regular schedule, whether you would like it quarterly. Um, it'd be great for us to set that up and have a, a regular program, the meeting time. It would, it would help us, and we just get in a flurry, and, and next thing you know, the next fair's come up, so it'd be good to get that on, uh.
I personally would not have a problem with that.
Fantastic. Wonderful.
I'll get with you. I don't, I'm, J.R., I'll get with you on that, okay?
Fantastic.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too want to echo the sentiments of my commissioners. Y'all have done a great job out there. And, uh, in the past, I was on the fair board when I was a private citizen, and, um, it's changed a lot since then. Mainly, I think our goal is to help you and then get out of the way and let you do what you do best. And Amy, I'm going to be sad that you're be leaving. Uh, you've been just a pleasure to work with. Ms. Samantha, is your last name really Fairline?
Fairline.
Fairline, okay. So, it has the word fair in it. Is that why you got hired? Is that, was that a plus?
Baby.
Well, and again, anything we can do, um, Commissioner Rawls is right, and we're all, we'll do whatever we can to help move this forward, because I do believe that those fairgrounds, and I, I hate to use the word fairgrounds because it gives you one identity, but it's so much bigger than fair anymore. And, um, it's just really wonderful. The other night at the Wild Game Feast, that building, it was just a whole different atmosphere of, of being outside, being enjoy, not dealing with the dust and having to wash that, that clay down for days at a time. I mean, it really was a very good thing, and, and I think people liked it better. I really do think they like that, under that cover, better. So, I'm looking forward to years to come and anything we can do to help get out of the way and let y'all do what you do best and bring economic development into the county, because that's what's going to, that's what it's going to be about. So, thank you very much for all your hard work.
One thing I didn't mention, we, we recently completed a, a visioning process. We brought in a, a, an architect who kind of does master plans, and we, maybe that'd be the, a good topic for our first meeting. Um, we've got a long-range vision that includes much more activity out there at the grounds. Um, you know, just a different look, um, different flow, just a, a completely modernized and, um, but true to our, our rural, you know, heritage, so, yeah, we can update you on that.
Just want to throw something in there to y'all, and this was mainly talking about the building and the money. Um, we, we appreciate everything, especially Bobby and what Bobby did, Mr. Payne did for us. Um, we had a lot of meetings with Bobby, with y'all, but, um, one thing that y'all may or may not be aware of, I know Terry and Julianne is, we've met with them over, but when we received that grant, that grant is locked in, I mean locked. It's got to be the exact address. The name of the building has to be consistent. It has to have the exact square footage, include the kitchen. And that's where it really blew us out. Mr. Rawls, we were, me and J.R. and Kyle many times talked about reaching out to you, and that's why we were, for your expertise in that area to look at other options, and that's why we've been trying to make a contact separately of the board, of course. But, um, the, the big dilemma we have is trying to come up and not lose that money, because Mr. Suggs and Ms. Ms. Young has been very helpful with us, and we've been talking, but our fear is, if we can't get something to at least get that building built with whatever the absolute bare minimum is, which is a lot, we have to get that money back, and I'm telling you, that's, that, that's hurting all of us. So, I'm just bringing that up so you, you can be aware of it, because when we do come to you, whatever savings, like you just mentioned, prefab building, local, anything we could do, we want to do. But our biggest concern is having to give back $1,102,000.
I'm available.
Okay. We'll, we'll have that part of the first discussion when we meet, and hopefully we'll meet, you know, next quarter. Uh, Commissioner Harvey?
You know, I think that's the big problem with government. When money's delivered, it has, it has strings to it, and if you can't handle the strings, then that's the problem, and, and we, we feel our, the pain up here too sometimes, and we don't like it. If I was to give your money out, I could, I could take all your wallet and stand out there today and give it out and feel good about it. But when it comes with strings, it's, it's a little different, but I'm sure there's some modifications that might could happen. I'm not sure, but there's, sometimes there's negotiations that can take place, so.
Just so y'all know, the real big thing from that was running back three and a half years ago, almost four years ago when it was put in. It's taken that long. So, if you go back to that year, our numbers are probably fairly close, but if you amortize that to today and look at all the increases, unfortunately, that's what happened.
Commissioner Adams Act?
What, what's the timeframe for that?
At, that's mid-June of 2023, so we, we've had, uh, a couple contractors say, yep, you know, no problem, we can make it happen, and we've had a couple say, you've got to be kidding me.
It has to be built by then, you're saying?
Correct, or substantially.
Substantially.
In progress, and we don't know really what that means, but, um, we can't go to them with a conceptual drawing in June of next year. We've got to have some, you know, money committed and, and probably ground broken.
So, I think we probably need to have that meeting sooner than later.
Sooner and later, yes. I'll try to set that up in first part of April.
Yep, and we don't expect to have the balance of those, um, estimates back until, well, they've said we get them the, the date of mid-March, but, you know, it may or may not happen.
Commissioner Rawls?
Like I said, um, I'm available.
Okay.
From 8 o'clock until 5 o'clock, um, in my office. After 5 o'clock, you guys can swing by the house, or I can stay late. Regardless of where I am, I have design software. We can pull it up. Uh, I don't know what design you're working off of, um, but I'll, 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 I'll do what I can do to get you where you need to get, but.
Well, we'll get you, and, and some of this will, you know, we've talked about the idea of floating, the idea of phases with them, and we don't know if that, if that may be. idea of phases with them. And we don't know if that may be possible. So I'll get you, you know, the current conceptual design we have. And we gave our, those contractors some latitude from that. And we'll be with you soon.
I guess mine is. Commissioner Turner?
Yeah, I think, JR, thank you for everything that y'all do. I know you work hard at it. But I think if I was you, I would go ahead and see about trying to get an extension on this as quickly as possible or what the possibilities of it are gonna be. As you know, I'm in the business too. I tried to order a large metal building not too long ago, and they told me forty-seven weeks.
Wow.
Going for a larger building. Now, a smaller building's a lot quicker, but a larger building. So by the time you get your bids in and go through the process, decide what you're gonna do or whatever, if you make it by June of next year, I'll be shocked. So this is the government we're talking about. It frustrates me every single day that I sit up here. And so I just believe that I'd go ahead and start looking into what it would take to get that. And if you end up not having to come up with some money and we have to start doing creative things with it, that's not gonna happen in two hours. Again, this is the government. So I think the first thing I'd do is have somebody start looking into, start looking into that.
Well, we'll have another update required for the state here shortly. And we can include that request for extension earlier rather than later.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, JR. Thank you very much for all y'all do. Okay?
Thank you. Bye, Amy.
Okay, our next item of business presentations, I'll ask President Chamber of Commerce, Ms. Dana Jones, to come up, and Vice President Economic Development, Mr. Sam Runas, to give us an update on the Bass Masters Tournament, was held a month or so ago, and then a business attraction commercial. So welcome, Dana and Sam.
Thank you. And good morning, everyone. As you know, Putnam County recently hosted the Bass Master League Tournament, which brings many visitors and delivers positive national attention. It's kinda like we are the world focus on fishing is right here in our backyard. I want to thank you and know that we appreciate the help of many of the folks that were on the ground helping this event, including some of yourselves. And the tremendous help we get from the Putnam County Sheriff's Department goes a long way, too. We appreciate that so much. Thank you. The attendance figures for the Bass Master this year, about eight to ten thousand over the four-day event, with the highest number being on Saturday. Sunday, the weather was a little bad in the morning, but it did clear off. And we got a pretty good turnout Sunday afternoon, too. As y'all know, this is a nationally televised event. It aired that Saturday and Sunday, February thirteenth and twelfth and thirteenth, and had over one point two million viewers. During the four days of the event, bassmaster.com had unique traffic of just over seven hundred and fifty thousand with twelve million page views. We received great media exposure and still are getting mentioned in many print and other social media mentions about the event and the county. Reruns are set to air on the event, so we will get more television time. If you've missed the show, I would encourage you to watch it. It really reminds you of just how beautiful our county is from that perspective. It airs again March twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth on Fox Sports Two. We knew it's over a million viewers. It was probably a great time to take advantage of that. So we decided to roll out the new business attraction video, which is what we really wanted to present to you this morning. Sam?
Okay, let's see if I can get this to work. Typically, commercials are short and sweet.
Thank y'all. I would also just like to mention again, the Visit Putnam County app and encourage all people to use it. It's good for visitors, residents, local businesses. If you go there today, you'll see the details on the fair. They have put their event in there. And thank y'all for that. Also, I just want to proudly announce that on Friday, we received news that the Putnam County Chamber of Commerce has earned five-star designation as an accredited Chamber of Commerce. And I want to thank y'all for y'all's role in helping us. It comes together because of a lot of great people that are volunteers, our businesses, our elected officials like yourselves, and all of the great partnerships we enjoy. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dana. Don't leave just yet. I've got a few questions. But anyway, I was gonna comment on that, the award that the chamber received. And a lot of that has to do with the staff's work and coordination and everything. So that's just another great tribute to the chamber and what it provides for Putnam County. So a couple of questions. Commissioner Turner, we'll start with you.
That's what I was gonna bring up. Actually, I didn't know it was gonna be part of our presentation. And I wanted to make sure we got it on TV today, that the five-star accreditation. And you know, that's added to the two times winner of Chamber of the Year for the country. I call it Chamber of the World, because I'm being a smartass. But it's actually two times number one chamber in the country, and now five-star accreditation. This is a good deal, folks. It really is. It just shows the dedicated and hard work of our chamber and our chamber officials. And thank you for what you did on the Bass Tournament again. And I know that y'all are getting to be experts on it because this wasn't your first rodeo, literally. And so thank you for what you do. And congratulations on the five-star accreditation.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Rawls?
Is there any way to quantify the return on the investment? So we get a lot of this exposure, but how do we quantify what we get for that in the end? Is there any way y'all can dig into that and get back with us and let us know what the net effect is?
Pertinent to just the accreditation status?
No, no. On the tournament itself, you said we had eight thousand people in town. So that's an impact. But did that translate to hotel stays? Did it translate to meals bought? I'm just wondering if there's any way to, you know, track the ROI?
We can estimate that, and we do. It's over a thousand room nights because they're in market, an average of six nights because they're required to come in on Sunday before the Thursday tournament. So they average over eleven hundred room nights.
Are those in Putnam? Because I've been told that a lot of them can't stay here because we don't have that many rooms available anyways with all the activities going on as it is.
I think for the most part, they were all in Putnam. And our hotels were full that weekend. Of course, there were other activities. As everybody knows, we had, I think, four different things going on. But they do, I'll provide an economic, I guess, a guesstimate.
I guess more specifically.
Obviously, we're not collecting data. We're not a research department. But we can certainly estimate probably expenditures of over a million dollars that translates into that two million dollar economic impact you here state about this event.
If we can maybe take a look at this. So we know that hotels have people that are staying there seven days a week because of the construction activities going on. Maybe we can find out how many were transient, if the other ones were more permanent. And then get back with us and let us know.
I know the room rates that weekend were like two hundred to three hundred dollars a night. So, you know, that's a pretty good amount of money coming in just from room nights alone. But we will try and get you that information.
I'd like to see that quantified in real dollars. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Okay, one last one. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Dana. Thank you for all your work and Julie and the staff and the volunteers that get up early and do that. I told a story, you weren't here at the, I think, the last board meeting, that I met a fisherman out in public in the shopping plaza out there. And he had his mom and dad with him. And his dad was wiping down the boat while they were shopping. And he just expressed, and his wife did too, so did the fishermen, they'd never been treated any better than they were treated here. And Dana, it takes me back to the time when the high-rise hotel was demolished and we had that, we had the field there. And we started parking boats. And we decided to have an area for women who were dropping their trailers off and be able to go out shopping. And we heard the same sentiments then, that they were never treated any better than anywhere else than they had been in Putnam County. I go back to my conversation in the parking lot. And I kind of feel like those are the conversations that are true. Certainly, we're down by the river. Everybody's appreciative. I get that. But when you're away from all the things going on, that's when you get down to the real meat of the matter. And they even suggested that they were gonna be, they were gonna start looking for property to buy here because of the beautiness of it, the resources we have, how friendly people were and accommodating. And they just felt at home, they said. So I go back and I really want to commend y'all. And when you turn on the national TV, and you know, one point something million people watched it, how many people went to the website. And I was even able to take out some people to dinner that night and have discussions that I needed to have. And it was just a wonderful, it's a wonderful time. And I don't believe we could ever buy, financially afford to buy, that kind of publicity for Putnam County. And truly, the weather did hang in there for a while. It was really, really good. And, you know, but it's still, even on a bad day, it's a great time to be in Putnam County. So thank you for all your hard work from this commissioner, and I appreciate it.
I often say, while the river is certainly one of our biggest assets, our people are the number one asset. We get more comments about hospitality, not just from the anglers, the marshals, the vendors love to come here. The way they're treated in every place they go, whether it's the gas station, a restaurant, the hotel, or anywhere, they just all comment on, they just cannot believe how hospitable our community is and how welcoming we are for visitors. So I'm just, like you, just proud of our people. And they really make us the great county that we are. Thank you.
Okay. Dana, thank you so much. And Sam. Okay, we'll move down to item six, public comment on agenda items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the board. It's not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in debate or deliberation on matters on which the board receives no prior notice. Are there any individuals wishing to make comments on public, on items that are on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll close that portion of this meeting. The commissioners will move down to the consent agenda. Any items wishing to be pulled by commissioners? I'll start with Commissioner Rawls. Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
I have item, item I, Mr. Chairman. No, item G. I'm sorry. Sorry.
Okay, item G. Commissioner Turner?
I have none, sir.
Commissioner Adamsak?
Item I.
Item I? Okay, and I have none.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the board approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, H, J, K, L, M, and N.
We got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey to approve the items not pulled on the consent agenda. We got a second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor indicate saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. Okay, it passes. We'll move down to item G. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, I talked to Mr. Troxel this morning. I should have done that yesterday. But on page one oh one, the description on the scope of work of County Road Three Fifteen Widening Resurfacing has mention of a cross drain in the vicinity of Second Street. We're hard pressed to find Second Street from twenty to one hundred. So I just want you to know that I do support this process. But we are trying to try to figure out what that cross drain is so it can be identified properly. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve item G.
We got a proper motion to move item G forward. And get a proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor indicate saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. We move down to item I, and Commissioner Adamsak?
I guess on item I, I just want to make sure we reiterate publicly that that size generator and stuff is all being looked into, that the possibility of it being a smaller, cheaper scope is out there. I just was wondering if Mr. Troxel could acknowledge that. He's shaking his head yes. So I'll take that as good enough.
I think it said it in the new paperwork.
Yeah. And I didn't read it in this. I didn't see where it was clear. But yeah. So we did discuss it during the workshop. So I just want to make sure everyone understands we are trying to bring this down a bit if it's possible. And that's all. I just wanted to make sure that comment was out there, that we are working to make this more cost-effective as a board.
Okay, yep. Thanks for clarifying. That's what I understood, I think, also.
Mr. Chairman, I move item I for approval.
Second.
Okay, we got a proper motion to move item I forward by Commissioner Harvey, and a second by Commissioner Adamsak. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. Gentlemen, y'all want to take a break?
We have nine thirty. We have a nine thirty hearing.
All right, okay. Okay, all right, we'll move forward to the nine thirty, public hearing, Public Works Department, Public Works adoption, a resolution to vacate a portion of First Street, Interlochen Avenue in Interlochen.
This is the one we heard about workshop already? So it's already been done?
Yep. Say Mike?
I'm ready to move forward. I just asked for public comment.
Okay. All right, we'll just hold you, see if there's any questions. But we'll open this up for any public comment. Any individuals wishing to speak for or against this vacation of a road? Okay, seeing none?
Move approval.
We got a proper motion by Commissioner Turner and a proper second by Commissioner Adamsak to move this item forward. Any discussions from the board? Okay, seeing none, seeing none, all in favor indicate aye. Aye, pose same sign. Okay.
Mr. Troxel, I just wanted you to know that Sarah isn't the only one that can make that happen.
Whoa. I can't believe you went there all throw down.
Well, I was gonna mention it. I wasn't gonna put it exactly that way. But I guess you're taking the Susan Karen school, as James did, to tell, move things forward. Okay, all right, we'll move down to item nine, Code Enforcement. It's Mr. Thomas Moore to come forward for a fine reduction request on Coach's case number two thousand nine zero zero eight eight four.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The property owner's name is Larry Conti. The violation was unsafe structure and care premises. The original fine amount was one hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty cents. The total cost of enforcement action was two thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars. The property owner has recently purchased the property and is now compliant. And he's requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend a reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Okay, Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we reduce the fine to thirteen hundred and seventy-four dollars if paid within ninety days.
We got a proper motion to reduce the fine to thirteen seventy-four if paid within ninety days. We got a proper second by Commissioner Turner. Okay, for discussion, I'll open this up. Is the property owner here?
No.
No? Nobody make, okay. Open up for any, do I have to do public comment on this? Open up for any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, all in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay, passes. Thank you. You're in that school, too. I see the awfy back there smiling. Okay, we'll move down to item ten, Clerk of Court, Mr. Matt Reynolds, Honorable Matt Reynolds.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I have nothing to alert y'all to this morning. Thank you.
All right, we'll move down to appointments and start with Commissioner Adamsak.
So I have one, I'm appointing Ms. Kathy Edie to District Five vacant for Animal Services Advisory Committee. Her packet's been turned in, so I think she's all set.
Okay.
That's the only one I have today.
Okay, and that's a district appointment, so we don't need to vote on that, correct? Okay, Commissioner Turner?
Yes, I have a district appointment to the same committee, Animal Services Advisory Committee, of Mr. Jackson Tilton.
Okay.
And I have no additional ones today.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Rawls?
I have none. I have none available.
That's a good feeling. And Commissioner Harvey?
I'm getting closer, but I have none today. Thank you.
Okay, and I have none. Okay, we move down to item twelve, public comment on miscellaneous items. Any individuals wishing to make public comment on miscellaneous items? This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to attention of the board. It's not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in debate or deliberation. Please leave your comments to three minutes and have a Please leave your comments to three minutes and have a comment card if you'll fill it out. So, we have one comment, so if you, Mr. Glenn Adams, if you'll come forward? And if you'll speak, speak loudly into the microphone, if you'll, uh, state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you very much, all of you, for having me. My name's Glenn Adams, and I live on South Palm and Campbell on the corner. Now, there's been some big issues discussed here, important stuff this morning, and I'm fascinated to have been able to sit here and listen to all of it, it just blows me away. So, in comparison, my little request seems puny. Nevertheless, when you speak on behalf of the welfare and the safety even of other people, it hardly comes under the category of puny. That's where I come in. I live on the corner of South Palm and Campbell, and of course, everybody here knows how busy those roads are, Palm and Westover, they run parallel and the traffic is tremendous. The only connection between the two is Campbell Street. Thank goodness, for a couple of years ago, it was repaved, and I'm blessed for that because it was full of potholes and badly needed. But it's one thing a little short about it. A lot of people and a lot of traffic is on Campbell Street going back and forth between these two busy thoroughfares, and it's badly in need of a sidewalk. Now, as I understand from the paper, uh, my meager little understanding of politics and the way things work is that this county's come into some state funds for that very sort of thing, and I'm here on behalf of the people who walk. I'm retired, I live on the corner, and I don't go anywhere, so I see everything that happens on Campbell. Women walking down through there trying to get to Palm where they can go down, I guess it's north on Palm, to go to the stores. Save-A-Lots down there, and now this new Dollar General on the corner demands a lot of traffic, and women are pushing baby carriages. School kids have to walk along that thing to get down there to go to the school, and people on their bikes, that, it's, it's just too darn dangerous. And I spent 20 years humping the big rigs all over the country, and I know the sounds of screech, bam! I don't have to see what it was, I know what it was. And so, I'm prepared to run out there, I guess, and, and do what? Pick up a body on the road, you know, call 911, have them come scrape up the pieces? Somebody's gonna get killed on that busy Campbell Street because they have to walk out there and mingle with the traffic. And the cars are zigzagging around, I mean, it's like, I think it should be renamed the Campbell 500, in, to match up with Daytona. But anyway, I was hoping to get some input and, and, and people would get you to somehow come up with the funds to pave the sidewalk down through there from Palm to Westover. It, it's not gonna break the bank, it's only, I've measured it about a thousand feet, two blocks. And so, it would save a lot of trouble for the people walking and, and probably save somebody's life. I'm surprised they haven't been killed already. Anyway, thank you for your time, I appreciate your consideration, and, and I, as I say, I live on the corner, you've got my name and phone number, so if anybody wants to come and talk to me about what I see and hear, I'm always there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Adams.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls, you have a comment?
Sir, before you sit down, um, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not positive that property is ours, I believe that might be in the city, but there is a piece of sidewalk that runs along the, the, the south side of Campbell Street. Uh, but I, I do know your pain, I live on Twig Street, and it's, it's, it's the last connector that you can get from Westover to Palm, and people are trying to avoid the light over here at Westover and Creel, and they, they shoot across, so I, I know that, uh, that, uh, but I, I don't, I'm not sure if there's anything we can do about that piece of land because I don't believe it's ours. I think, I think you'd have to go approach the City Commission.
It's county property. I mean, we're outside the city limits.
No, Camp, um, the Campbell, the Campbell, all apartments on Campbell Street?
Oh, yeah.
Those are all in the city limits.
It's in the city?
Yes, sir.
Well, I've been three years trying to get this done, and I've called and hounded everybody I can think of, and they all say it belongs to the county. Don't bother us with it, so, I mean, I'm kinda caught in a, a proverbial rock and a hard place.
The Placahousing Authority owns all those units, and they're, I've done work on all of them, I've pulled, every permit I pulled was in the city limits.
Well, they don't know that. So, maybe you should inform them.
Mike Troxel, do we own Campbell Street? But would we own, would we have the right of way for the, the sidewalk, I guess is the next question.
They're always looking, I'm, right, Commissioner Harvey, you had a comment?
Yes, Mr. Adams, thank you for bringing that to our attention. As we're looking that, um, we, we are gonna have a joint meeting here soon with the City of Palaka Commissioners, so that might be a good time for you to come back out and make your request known again, they'll be in this, this chamber.
I'll do that, so when would that be?
Seventh of April.
April 7th at 5:00, 5:00 PM, correct, Sarah?
Mr. Chairman, if it, if, if we can, I'd be more than happy to, to meet with the gentleman as well as make sure that we do the research necessary to get him an answer as quickly as possible on ownership of that, and that way, you know, we'll be able to bring it back to the Board with some so, solid information and, and request.
Okay.
I'd be more than happy to do that.
I've got some sketches here, a little picture of it with my name, address, and everything, if you want one, anybody.
Okay, he's gonna work.
We're okay. All right, Commissioner Turner?
Um, Mr. Chairman, didn't we have some kind of a South Palm sidewalk project that we actually passed on?
Yeah, that's, that's in, that's in the works, but he's, he's coming off of Palm onto, all the way down Campbell Street to West, to Westover.
You live at the corner of Campbell and Palm, didn't you?
That's where I live, I'm on the corner.
He lives on the other side, not over there by Westover where the apartments are, he lives on the other end of it, where it dead ends, Campbell dead ends into, doesn't it dead end into Palm, into Palm Avenue down there?
Down by the apartments.
Yeah, so, um, well, the apartments are on Westover behind the church, aren't they?
No, they're on Campbell.
Well, it's, we own it.
But I mean, down, down that, never, it doesn't make any difference.
Okay.
If they're in the county, fine, don't, this area, he asked for Palm Avenue from Highway 20 or Creel down to Westover, that's where he was, his request was. Don't we have a project already going in that area for a sidewalk?
Down Palm.
Down Palm, well, that's what he's asking for, is Palm, correct?
On Palm, there's sidewalks already, to clear down to Creel.
We'll have, you want down Campbell.
But I'm talking about on Campbell. It's the only connection between those two main highways, and a lot of people walk on it.
Okay, we'll have Administrator Suggs get with you, and, and we'll get with our Public Works Department, and then we'll determine if, first, if it's in the city or the county and, uh, what.
Well, Commissioner Turner, I do have it confused, you're, you're between Westover and Palm, not, um, I'm thinking of Hassan and Westover, so.
No.
You're, you're, yeah, you're in a high-speed area.
Dangerous position between Westover and Palm on Campbell, it's all of Campbell, I mean, I don't care if it's on the south side, we're on the south side of Campbell. If it's on the north, big deal. I mean, I take care of the sidewalk in front of my property out along Palm. I keep it clean, trimmed, if it gets slippery from the mold on it, I'm out there with my pressure washer. I do the same thing on Campbell. If there's a sidewalk there, I'll take care of it, since I'm retired and I'm there all the time, I've got the time. I don't want to see somebody hurt, as I say. I know what the sound is, and I don't want to hear it again. I've heard it for 20 years on the road, and thank you, I've seen enough.
Okay, so we'll have Administrator Suggs, we'll get back, or one of the staff members will get back with you. Okay, Mr. Adams?
All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, Mr. Troxel, would you raise your hand, please? Would you get this gentleman's name and contact information so we can research that and get back with him hopefully this week?
Uh, thank you for your time.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment on miscellaneous items? Okay, seeing none, we'll close that public comment portion, and we'll move down to comments. Uh, County Administrator, uh, Mr. Terry Suggs?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just to, uh, a quick couple of updates, Mr. Sullivan texting me this morning, uh, the, the information that, uh, we have received in the past from DEO on our St. John's Avenue project, some additional funding opportunities, the county's environmental study's been done on that, and we've been approved for the additional funding. So, when we get the scope of work, we'll bring that back to you as an update, but it was 1.8 million dollars added to that project. Uh, second is, uh, with the folks here this morning from, uh, the American Red Cross, they mentioned the Panhandle. As you know, a, a call went out across the state, uh, for additional assistance, they had a 10,000 acre wildfire in Bay County. Uh, so, uh, Public Safety Director Grimes answered the call, and we have a truck and, and two, uh, fire rescue folks up there as of last night. Uh, the, I know that, uh, our CFO for the state, Mr. Patronus, is, uh, working closely with those folks, so, uh, I want to commend, uh, Director Grimes for being able to put that together as quickly as he did and get some assistance up there to help those folks in Bay County, uh, certainly needed. And also, um, my last comment this morning is a little bittersweet, and, uh, but, uh, I don't know if, uh, everybody knows, but some of us do, that today is Ms. Herbin's last day, and we're gonna blame Matt Reynolds, the Honorable Matt Reynolds, for that. And, uh...
The feedback's are hell, Matt.
But, uh, you know, we've had Ms. Sarah now for quite a while, she was with, uh, the Clerk of the Court's office prior to coming here and did our minutes, uh, for the Honorable Tim Smith, and, uh, so, uh, it is bittersweet, Sarah's done a fantastic job, and so, uh, we're gonna miss Sarah greatly. Uh, her, uh, her skills here were, were very well received and, and needed, and, uh, but, you know, we, uh, we didn't have to look far to find, uh, Sarah's replacement, and that would be Ms. Bararty. Uh, most of you know Ms. Laura from the front desk. Uh, Laura, uh, stepped up and requested an opportunity to fill that role, and we're gonna give Ms. Laura every opportunity to be successful, and I want to thank her for that as well. Once again, another opportunity to promote from within, uh, for someone that's well deserving, so, uh, big shoes to fill with Sarah leaving, but I believe Ms. Laura's up to the task, and, uh, I want to say congratulations to both of you. And, uh, Sarah, we're certainly gonna miss you.
Okay, thank you, Administrator Suggs, and I was gonna make a comment, congratulations to Laura, um, for that position. Um, I talked to Larry Harvey, see if he might fill in at the desk since you're not there, and he said he did that before, it didn't work out well, so.
They said I wasn't trainable.
And then Sarah, I remember just a few years ago, as I took the chairmanship for the first time, and we lost Tony Weaver, and it was your first, one, first couple of meetings, uh, but we gained Sarah, a member of our family, and I know Matt will treat you well over there, so we'll still stay in contact. So, I don't know if anybody's keeping score or not, but, uh, anyway, congratulations for both of y'all, we want the best for both of you, so. Okay, we'll move down to County Attorney, Rich Commando. Okay, Commissioner Comments, I'll start with Commissioner Rawls.
All right, we're, we're to the point on the Animal Services Shelter where we, we as a Commission need to have a conversation about if we're gonna build this, um, design bill, we need to, uh, hire a construction manager to be able to finish the plans out. So, um, there, I've got a, a share file, um, built with the plans in it, but typically the way construction managers work is you, you bring them on, um, they have input as far as, um, cost savings and value engineering, and then they finish it out. So, in this case, we would hire an electrician, they would hire an electrician, the electrician would do their own electrical wiring diagram for the, um, riser, the riser schedule and the panel schedule, uh, we would not have to hire an electrical engineer. They would bring on a plumber to do the isometric drawings, the plumber would do that themselves, uh, but the construction manager would drive that. So, um, I've spoken of this before, I really think that it would benefit the county, it would benefit the fair authority, it would benefit a lot of folks in the community if we had a construction manager on tap, um, either as an employee or as a, a subcontractor to the county, or contractor, I guess it'd be. But, uh, we're, we're to that point now. Um, the, I, I thought about the other day when I, when, um, Gillian was giving her report, and she said we're waiting for the, the engineering to be finalized, um, you go to a certain point, typically it's 60%, then you hand it over and say, okay, let's get this finished out. So, the, um, the meat of it is done, um, we just need to get the, start figuring out who the, the person is that's gonna drive this bus. And, um, I would also offer that, uh, at any point during the construction process, anything that I can do through my business to help save money, whether it's sourcing materials or, or supplies, I would be willing to do that. Um, I do have access to lower-cost building materials these days. The Animal Services Committee has made a request, I don't know if everybody got the email, or I was the only one, but, uh, I saw an email that said that they were on to see if they could get some, um, time with us at a workshop to discuss their, um, the, their, their committee and the, uh, maybe adding new positions to it. Um, and then, um, hopefully this afternoon, Ms. Dollar's gonna be coming in to speak to us about, um, the library and the use of, virtual use, um, and she made a lot of sense. She, her question was, why do I have to have a library card to check out an ebook? And I, I just kinda scratched my head and said, I'm really not familiar with this process, so I, I'd have to, I'd have you come in and talk to us, but, uh, hopefully she'll be coming this afternoon to talk about it, if not, um, we'll continue this conversation. Otherwise, um, I attended the mayor's reception the night, as did Commissioner Pickens, it was, um, a very well-attended event. Um, they had a taste of Palaka, whi, which was interesting, and the food was phenomenal. Um, it's interesting when you attend something like this and, you know, um, I, I've never eaten at a Caribbean, um, restaurant before, but their food was just, and I, I love Caribbean food, it was really good. Um, I was introduced to new restaurants that we have, uh, via that event, but it was well-attended, and, uh, I guess if there's a consolation for not having the, um, Messiah Festival, that would have been it, it was a festival unto itself, so, thank you very much.
Okay, Commissioner Turner, you had a, a comment?
Uh, yes, um, I, I don't have any issues whatsoever in hiring a, a job-specific construction manager, I do have serious issues about Putnam County trying to go into business against all, all the other contractors around Palaka. I've always had an issue with that. I think we need to stand up for those businesses, not compete against them and try to kill them. So, uh, but on certain projects, it does absolutely, um, is better to try to find somebody to do a design-build type project. In this case, the standard for design, or the standard for bid, is that to a point to where like Commissioner Rawls said, it, they can take that standard for design that has been developed and go move forward, and they only have to do electrical design or whatever. That is not like they start from scratch, and you might get a pole barn bid from one and a red iron building from the other. It's not, now we have a standard of design which was done, uh, by Commissioner Rawls, or he spearheaded it. So, it would be the time at this point to bring on a design-build firm or a construction manager that can get their subs to take it to the next step. Uh, that would not be necessarily competing, 'cause anybody could come forward and ask to do that if they wanted to do it. So, it would not be competing against local subs, they could do it if they wanted to. So, um, I think it is time to move that forward, if there, if we have plans at 60%, I think it's time to, what would that be, Julie, an RFP, RFQ, to, to?
It's gonna be RFQ.
RFQ, so look for, maybe we need to start looking for an RFQ for somebody to take the information that we have, standard of design, and take it, take it through to the end of the project. We know where it's gonna go, we know, we're, we're at the point now, he's absolutely correct, we're at the point now we need to move this forward, it's gone on long enough. I mean, I know why, I know I'm not being critical, I'm just saying it's time now that it's at this point, uh, we need to move it forward.
We can do that at any time the, the information's provided to us.
Okay, well, if you could provide, Commissioner Rawls, do you have that information?
Yeah, I'll, um, we work off of, um, a share drive through Google Workspace, so I'll, um, I'll include you in the list of people who have access to it.
Okay.
Um, be aware that there's PDFs and DWG files.
Okay.
Um, the DWG files are CAD files, so they're probably not gonna do you a lot of good, but the, the, you have the, the duplicate in PDF that you can.
That's perfect.
Well, if we can get it moving, I'm with Commissioner Rawls, I think we need to move that one forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, can we move it forward from this discussion, or we need to put it on April workshop?
No, we can't.
We can, okay, 'cause I, I think we're all, each commissioner up here is in agreement of that.
You're seeking a construction manager, correct?
Yes.
And I'd, I'd be willing to help.
A design-build-construction manager to move this forward. It could even, you could even call it a project manager, whatever you wanna call it. It's basically somebody to take the design that we've, that we have for a standard of design and take it forward to the end and, and present it. And what'll usually happen is we'll have to ask them what, on their request for qualifications, what the percentages they're gonna charge to do that. Because you'll get everything from, I mean, it's more of a bid on percentages more so than, than anything else. Kinda like, we tried it in East Palacka and it was okay, so, but it's the same thing. I think that was just before you got here, but you knew what happened, yeah.
Commissioner Adamsak?
I guess I just have two questions from your comments. On the Animal Services Advisory Committee, I mean, can't they get on our agenda? Isn't there a way, a means by which the chairwoman or chairman could just request that? So I would ask that they request it, and we get them on as soon as possible. The good news is we.
Request what?
He said that they, the email that came out from the chair over that board wanted to get in front of us.
She said you wanted an update. I didn't see where.
Yeah, I saw where it was at. I was gonna discuss that at our workshop this afternoon.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, but how would you get an update if she wasn't here, I guess is. I mean, we're not all gonna go to that meeting, I don't think. We could. And then the other part of it is, I mean, we did just fill two of the three vacant slots today. So I, let's see, I'd say before we add more people to the advisory committee that we see how having those seats filled with people helps the committee move forward. Because I think that was part of the problem, the couple of meetings I attended, was they just had a limited number of individuals. And I just wanna say one more thing quick and.
Do you have a Gmail account?
Actually, I'll say it when I have Commissioner comments.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you wanna thank Sarah for all the hard work? She's not here. There she is, Sarah. Thank you for all your hard work over all the years and helping me along the way too. And it's been a pleasure working for you. And if Matt doesn't treat you well, let me know, you know? He will get no more pork from me, so that's just the way it's gonna be. Or the red light.
I'm not gonna go.
That's right. But Laura, thank you for interviewing and stepping up. And, and I hate to say this, but there's hardly any job training in this business. You're thrown into the deep end of the pool. And, but that makes character, and we've all been there. But there's enough staff here that can help fill that void and, and help you get to where you wanna be and make your life successful and make ours easy to work with too. I'm happy to hear that we're going out for an RFQ on construction manager for the Animal Services. That's been a long, long time coming. And that building will be badly needed and very much used the minute it's opened the doors. But that's been a long time coming. Gonna sound like Commissioner Rawls here for a second. You know, if you look at gas prices and you look at prices at the grocery store, I think we're gonna have to start making some, have our staff have the ability to start looking at work from home in some cases. Maybe using minimal unnecessary trips and county vehicles. Gas prices are going up and people just can't afford it. We can't very well tell the Sheriff's Department to work from home when the deputies have to patrol. But surely, I mean, I don't know about y'all, but I can put $30 a day in my vehicle and travel around. That's, that's gonna eat into our bottom-line profit, our not profits, our bottom line here at the county, big time. And it, it concerns me that. So we're gonna probably have to start thinking out of the box, and some of our employees are gonna have to make decisions whether they can afford to continue to work at that point. Prices are just crazy, and even the grocery store prices are going, going up and up and up. So I think we do need to start looking at that and be mindful of what's happening in the future, 'cause it's gonna be very expensive to, to get to work and to do the job it's required to do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Commissioner Adamsak?
Yeah, Sarah, thank you for everything you've done since I've been here. I really appreciate it. I really look forward to Ms. Laura, you, you moving into that slot. I think we have two great individuals there, and you're, you're gonna be blessed, I believe. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, it's surprising to me that the hardest committee that I've had to put someone on is the Better Place Plan, which is one that I thought I would've had people knocking down my door to, to wanna be part of.
Try looking for the affordable housing committee.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I was able to fill that one though, real quick. Better Place Plan, I, I just, I can't get anyone to. So if anyone's out there from District Five, 'cause I think that has to be an in-district appointment, and you're interested in being in a Better Place Plan Oversight Committee, I guess I'm just putting out there, 'cause there is like 300 people that watch this, our meeting sometimes as it goes through the week. And obviously, those people are the ones that are most engaged, 'cause they're taking the time to watch us talk. Please reach out to me, 'cause I'm, I'm having a very difficult time with, with that particular committee. The only other thing I have is for our joint meeting with the city, you know, there's always seems to be a lot of hubbub about St. John's Ave. Just it keeps coming up in social media, it keeps coming up in, in public commentary. And there's a lot of people that have a lot of misconceptions about what's going on with it, about, you know, why it's being held up, things like that. That could be one of the things that is, I guess we're trying to have an agenda for the meeting with the city. I think that is something that we should talk about openly, what's going on with the state, us and the city with regards to that. And, and we all need to kinda start pushing that same, we all need to get on the same page and make sure we're all communicating the same type of thing. But basically, my understanding is, and I, I agree with it, is we wouldn't wanna pave a road and then have to tear it up to, to fix the stuff that's underneath it right after, or we're right back where we started. So a lot of people in the public don't seem to understand that that's happening. I don't know if it's why, but you know, if someone posts something about St. John's Ave and 200 people are commenting on it in 10, 12 minutes. So it's, I just wanna put that out there that I'd like to see that could be one of our agenda items.
Okay, Sarah, you'll start that, or Laura? That'll be one of the first ones, okay?
That is all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Adamsak. Commissioner Turner?
Now that the meeting's about over, my wife's bringing my hearing aids to me. I'll have them for this afternoon, so they'll all be appreciated. You can just hand them to somebody or bring them right over here.
Good morning, Laura.
Thank you, darling. I appreciate it.
Some of the rest of us might need some too, so if you got some extra.
I'd like to join everybody and wishing Sarah the best as she moves forward. We love you and we're gonna miss you. So, but we, the worst part about it is now when we want somebody to get on a Jacob, we can't do it. Now we have to call you down at the clerk's office to get you to get on Jacob Ford. Hopefully, you know that's in jest, but we're gonna miss you. And welcome Laura to the position. So I'd like to take this opportunity to reiterate the thanks to the chamber for what they do for the community as far as economic development. I think they do a wonderful job and the, and the huge task that it took to become a five-star accredited chamber. You don't see that happen very much in small rural communities. They don't have that ability. So it just goes to show you how well that our chamber operates in this area. I'd like to bring up a little bit this morning. The Board has asked me to look at, to keep involved in the landfill over the years, and I have. And we've made some pretty good progress. And, and they've also asked me to look at the utilities part of it too. I, I'm, I'm trying to figure out a way that everybody can kinda get together and help one another. And it wasn't my idea. It was a, in a game with a, just a casual conversation with the, all the parties involved in it. We had a leachate problem not too long ago, where our leachate goes to Jacksonville. And for some reason, and I'm not exactly sure why, they shut it down for a few weeks. We got it, almost got to where we were in a world of hurt, not having anywhere to send our leachate. I have requested from Mr. Suggs and, and, and Mr. Tilton and Mr. Troxel a meeting where we can kinda see what it would take to get our leachate treated to a point to where we could send it to our own plant. Right now, we just can't do it. It blows it up. We just, there's no way to do it without some type of a treatment. So we're gonna start, I wanted the Board to know that we're gonna start having meetings to start looking at that direction, to see what it would take and how much it would cost and how many years it would take us to, for a return on investment to get our money back to the county if we forwarded enough to put in a plant to treat that leachate to the point where we could dump it over there. So we're gonna start that process in the not-too-distant future. The, the other process that I'm trying to get started is, is we have, we have a, a rubber shredder in this year's budget. Haven't got it yet, and the reason they haven't is 'cause they, number one, they got to make sure they get their permitting in place. And, and once they do, what kind, what kind of shredder they need to make it to where we can possibly use that crumb rubber or that rubber out of that shredder to add to our asphalt, to use asphalt on our roads and possibly save money. So we're at the infancy of that at this time, of, of looking into that. So I just wanted the Commission to know that I'm, that we're, I'm gonna take those, both of those avenues and try to move down them and see if they, what would be the best for the community with the help of Mr. Tilton and Mr. Troxel on both, both counts and Mr. Suggs, of course, on, on, on both avenues. I wanted to bring that up to everybody today. And let's see, I think that's all I have today, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner. Commissioner Rawls, you had a comment?
The only thing that I would ask when you guys are looking at that leachate plant is the possibility of including sewer treatment for that part, that portion of Putnam County. We're gonna, I mean, I'm heavily in favor of us doing our own leachate, but if we could, if we could incorporate sewer treatment at the same time for a future expansion, I think that would make sense for that part of Putnam County, especially with the growth that we have coming.
The only thing I'd have to be careful of is that the, we think that with the preliminary guestimates and this guestimate at this time, that we're talking about possibly around $2 million to have something that would just treat it good enough to get it to where we could haul it to East Palacka and dump it in the plan. The sewer plant in East Palacka was $17 million or something, and that was back, you know, many, many years ago. So it'd cost $40 million to put that in right now. We can look at it.
That included.
But we're not, that's a whole different discussion.
That included distribution. I'm saying just onsite itself. Maybe look at having, having the sewer treatment incorporated with that. At the same time, we have the land available and it might, just, just worth looking at.
Well, and it may be. Oh, I'm here again.
I am healed!
Thank you, Laura. So anyhow, the, it would, while we look at this, Jay, and maybe we could talk to Sam about it too, to find out if, if the plant that we put in, could you, would it help or hurt if we dumped trucks, you know, like they do, they can do at a sewer plant now. They can dump a truckload of sewage in there. Would that help or hurt if we took them into the landfill at a, at a cost, of course, to help us generate revenue to, to pay this situation? We wouldn't just have to do it off of, of just the revenue that we would not have to send the leachate to somebody else, because we're still gonna have to pay some costs in East Palacka to, to, to offset there. So that's why I need us all to sit down in a room. Maybe we can figure it if, I don't even know if it's the same kind of equipment, Commissioner. I don't even know if, if it's the same stuff that we could take it in. If it is, then, then it shouldn't be an issue unless we're at capacity.
But I'm telling you, so being, having the ability to treat it onsite fully instead of having to move it to East Palacka, there's inherent risk with that, number one. But number two, it would give us a sewer treatment plant in the northwest portion of Putnam County for future growth, but it would also save us on the.
We can look at that, can't we, Jay?
And biosolids as well. No, I, I know that. I'm just saying.
Come on up to the podium, so if we're gonna have this discussion, so we can, we'll get this on.
I'm just saying, if we look at it while we're looking at it, and have, look at that as well, see what the cost difference is.
Yeah, if we could just maybe look at that, because I know that, for instance, all we have to do is add oxygen and get the ammonia out.
That's right.
That's basically where we are.
You could do ozonation and.
So historically, the problems with leachate are BODs, which are biological oxygen demand, and then, and then your ammonia. And then sometimes you run into issues depending on your, your treatment levels with the UV treatments and stuff that's used now at wastewater treatment plants. So it's just a matter, you know, you go to bringing that in, though, it's a different process, 'cause there's solids and management and everything now, where we're really just trying to change the chemistry up enough to the point where that our, our treatment plant can take it. But absolutely, we can look at any of it.
We'll take a look at that at the same time. I'm just trying to figure out the cheapest way to make all this happen and not, if Jacksonville turned us off right now, we'd be in a world of hurt. I'm telling you, though.
We've discussed this before, so.
Yeah, and, and I'll tell you, what happened with Jacksonville was is, right now wastewater treatment plants, there's kind of a head coming between wastewater treatment plants and landfills on both sides. Our leachate actually, as they're going away from chlorination processes to the UV processes, our leachate blinds that UV treatment off, and it causes it to where they can't treat the rest of the materials that comes in. So what Jacksonville did is they were starting to see some issues, or JEA, they were starting to see some issues with that, and so they cut us off, our, our broker, for lack of a better term, or third-party contractor, and said, for two weeks, we don't want you to take any leachate anymore. And so what we're gonna do is make sure that your leachate is not having an effect on our plant. And it just, it got me to thinking of, like, we don't, we don't control our own destiny, essentially. And that's a, a big compliance thing. But on the other side of that, those treatment plants actually produce sludge. And landfills are getting to where they don't wanna take sludge, because the thing that actually makes our wastewater, our leachate more toxic is the sludge. So it's a vicious circle that somebody's gonna have to figure out with, and they're looking at all kinda stuff. But yes, sir, to answer, go around, you know, my elbow.
Well, we're fixing to start looking at that.
Let me ask you this, if I, if I may, way at the podium. Is there any organic compounds in the sludge that break down naturally that could be used in composting?
There is, but then that's, that's a whole, you're, you're getting some of that bio-solid stuff.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna, all right, so I'm gonna have a conversation with you.
Sure.
Before I leave this morning, if you and I can get together a few minutes, and I'll kinda give you a vision of what, what might be coming down the pipe.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Turner, you're gonna move this forward with outside meetings? You want this on a workshop to start?
The first thing I want to do before I bring it to a workshop is I wanna, I've already requested from Mr. Suggs that I can sit down with him, Mr. Troxel and Mr. Tilton and start this process, 'cause we, I think we're gonna have a lot of research to do on both sides. We've already got the money in the budget to buy a rubber machine. I don't know if we can get it for what we got in the budget, but we, but we're, we've got the money in there. But I don't know if the mach, if the money we have in the budget can take it to the stage that we need to take it to, to be able to use it in our roads. I've been doing research on the asphalt for the roads and using crumb rubber instead of aggregate in roads. If we can come up with the crumb rubber, not only we don't have to landfill or pay to get rid of the tires or the crumb rubber on the tires, we also, it, I understand that the roads last a lot longer with crumb rubber instead of aggregate in the, in the asphalt. So if we can do it for same price as less, if we go to running out of rubber, 'cause we're needing more, more than what we've got coming in to, to do some roads or whatever, I bet you we had an amnesty day and we spread it over two or three air, two or three counties or whatever. We'd have more tires. We'd have to chop them off somewhere up around Clay County somewhere that don't bring us any more tires. So I, I don't think the, the supply would be the issue if this ever works out in our favor. So that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to get this, we're trying to get, what'd make y'all fall out of your chair over there? So anyhow, that's what we're trying to do. That's one issue is, is the crumb rubber. That's in the budget this year. So hopefully, we, if we can get it done. But if we don't have enough money in the budget to get the machine that we need to turn these tires into the rubber that we can put in them roads, then we may need to drop back and punt instead of spending $600,000 or $800,000 or whatever on a rubber machine and then finding that we needed $950 to get the one we needed to use on our roads, then we need to find that out now before we buy that rubber machine. So we're, we're looking at the rubber issue, and we're gonna start looking at the leachate issue, 'cause I know they've got plenty of capacity in East Palacka, that plant, if we can get the leachate to where they can take it without blowing up the system over there. So that's what we're working on. I just basically a report today, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Commissioner Turner. Any comments on that? Okay, thank you, Jay. Okay. I also wanna thank Sarah. Really have enjoyed working with you. And I know Matt's gonna take good care of you on that side. And Laura, congratulations. Thank you for the, Wilkinson coming today and updating us on the port bill. It's a big, good news for Putnam County, that thing starting to move forward. So Dana and Sam, thank you for the update of the chamber, and congratulations on the five-star award. I was able to watch with the, to Bassmaster's Elite to watch it that Sunday and witness that guy, I guess he caught five fish in 20 minutes for about 20 pounds. Was pretty interesting. So it's a pretty, pretty interesting watch. And the exposure that we got, it's fantastic. My wife and I also were able to attend the mayor's reception. It's a shame that we did not, you know, have the Azalea Festival, but I just wanna comment and commend Mayor Terrell Hill. He did an excellent job greeting everybody and welcoming, explaining, talking about the city of Palacka and things that were happening in Putnam County. The venue was fantastic. It was well-attended. The food was fantastic. Tables were spread out, so you really weren't cramped together. But the new amphitheater, I guess you would call that. But looking from there to the river, it was just absolutely a beautiful night, great weather. And we really enjoyed it. The food was good, really good, and the music was off the charts. The band was tremendous. Started out with gospel and ended up. was off the charts. The van was tremendous. Started out with gospel and ended up with other music after that. So it was just a really a, a good event to showcase Putnam County and Palacka. On the 26th of February, we were finally able to, to really do a Philip Randolph justice. We were able to do the dedication and the unveiling of the signs that will be placed on Old 17 between Junction Road and New 17 that runs through Long Station. I want to thank Angel Dukes for really spearheading that. She really was persistent. This has taken a couple of years to get this done through the process of a moral highway. I want to thank Putnam County staff, Public Works, our GIS department, Sign Department for making the signs. We'll locate the signs in, in a future ceremony, probably in a month or so. But it was really a good event. Mayor, Mayor Terrell Hill was there, Mayor Michelle Myers, Commissioner Lisa DeVito, and Commissioner Harry Banks. Harry Banks grew up in Long Station is where this road runs through. And Harry's probably in his upper 70s. And so he was able to tell, growing up in, in Long Station in Crescent City. And Veronica Glover, actually his, her grandmother, knew a Philip Randolph. A Philip Randolph was born in Crescent City and his father passed her the church in Crescent City that's still, still standing and operating. So it was a great event, so I want to thank everybody involved. And I think that's all I have. We have a 2:00 workshop, and we have a 5:05 certain, correct, public hearing. So at this time, if there's no further comments, I'll just recess the meeting till 5:05. Thank you.